All right, why don't we all get our seats if we can and get started? If everyone could please have their seats. We're delighted to have you all with us. Today is the Monday, September 18th, 2017 meeting, work session meeting of the Falls Church City Council. Just for your information, generally in work session settings, the discussion is with those at the table and not so much with the folks in the audience. But we do have public meetings where the public can make comments. Those are every other meeting. But anyway, we're delighted you're all here with us this evening. Had a busy weekend, a lot of good stuff going on in the city the past couple of days. But let's go ahead and get started with the Railroad Avenue Fire After Action Report. Mr. Shields, do you have anything to, any introductory comments?
Well, thank you, Mayor Tarter. The, tonight is an after-action review and we're joined tonight by Mr. Dave Mulholland, who's the Administrator for the Arlington County Emergency Communications Center, and Jack Brown, who's the Director of the Department of Public Safety Communications and Emergency Management. And Chief Gavin is with us as well. So let me turn it over first to Chief Gavin, and she might make an introductory remark, and then we'll turn it over to our colleagues from Arlington County. And we really do appreciate your being here tonight to provide this report.
Thank you, Council. I just wanted to reintroduce the 1002 Railroad Avenue fire and the communications after-action report that we were going to review today. And it was regarding the actual process and communication from the Dorsey's Emergency 911 call the night of the fire to what Mr. Brown will talk about, how that process ended up, and what their findings were, and what are the corrective actions moving forward. Jack Brown's been with Arlington's Office of Emergency Management for a decade?
Almost 11 years.
Almost 11 years, and in large part in this region in public safety over 40. And we'll get to that later. But welcome, Jack, and if you wanted to go ahead and start.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor and my duty to present before you tonight what we have found as a result of the fire at 1002 Railroad Avenue on August the 6th. Before I get started in my report, I want to say that as the Director of the Arlington County Department of Public Safety Communications and Emergency Management, it's my sole responsibility to ensure that citizens of the City of Falls Church get quick and efficient service from the 911 center that you pay for and that you so deserve. So the buck stops here, is what I'm trying to say. On the morning of August the 6th, Fairfax County received a fire call reporting the fire at 1002 Railroad Avenue. Fairfax County transferred the call that was heard. However, the call was then transferred to Arlington County, and that call was disconnected. That occurred at 4:16 a.m. and 50 seconds. At 4:17 and 48 seconds, Arlington County received a 911 wireless hang-up call. That call was never answered, there was nobody on the other end. And at 4:18, Arlington County attempted to call back the 911 hang-up call. At 4:18 and 27 seconds, Arlington County attempted a second time to call back the 911 hang-up, and then a third attempt was made just a few seconds later. The call was dispatched at 4:26. That is about a nine-minute delta. In our business, it takes a couple of minutes to process the information and get the call out. On that particular morning, there was a confluence of situations that came together in the 911 center that both Mr. Mulholland and I believe resulted in the unacceptable delay of service to the community. And I apologize to the Dorsey's for that delay in fire services responding to their fire at that time of the morning during probably one of their most horrific times. The three factors that play into it is our computer-aided dispatch system did not recognize that address as being in the City of Falls Church. It recognized it as being in Fairfax County, so there was some confusion there. Our staffing in the center, we had unusual number of people call in sick that night, so we had three people on sick leave that challenged our staffing. So we try to keep 10 people in the center at all times. We were down that night despite repeated attempts to get people to come back to work. On a Saturday night, it's very difficult, so we had the staffing challenges. And the third factor is the call routing between Fairfax County and us and losing the callers, you know, on the other end of the phone. So there was really those three factors that played into it. Once the staff went to the map and realized it was in the City of Falls Church, and they identified the units, the units were dispatched. So that's the crux of the situation there. We've looked into it, we've taken remedial actions within 24 hours. We did a very careful review of all the addresses that border the City of Falls Church and Fairfax County, and made the adjustments in our computer-aided dispatch system. We've reviewed the protocols with our staff and how to, what we call, go manual when our CAD system has either inaccurate information or the system just goes down for whatever reason. And we're dealing internally with our own staffing challenges, which is not unusual in the 911 business. Most 911 centers, just hiring, retaining, and, you know, getting people trained and retaining them is a challenge in the industry, but that's our thing to bear. So that's really it. I'd turn it over to Mr. Mulholland if you'd like to add.
Good evening. Let me just say that the benchmark for ensuring that my employees are delivering the most efficient service is for me to envision myself standing there with my family in a situation like that, and what would my expectation be? And I can look at all the different factors that make this situation a little bit more complex than normally would be, and it's still, to me and my brain, is not a reasonable excuse to have to wait that long. So as Mr. Brown said, we accept full responsibility of this. I don't ever want to see us back in that situation again. It's horrible that it took a situation like this to bring certain things to our attention. I'm glad that they were brought to our attention. The GIS world is unique and complex. The situation we were dealing with that night dealt with a road that truly is half in Fairfax County, half in Falls Church. Our CAD system at the time used a benchmark of looking at the closest intersection to determine what jurisdiction gets dispatched. That was broken in this situation. I am new to the Arlington County Emergency Communications Center. I had only been there about 67 days when this occurred. But I knew that we had to take immediate action. So as you look at the handout that you were given, those remedial actions were started right away. As soon as we had determined that there was no policy violation, and I don't want to split hairs, because when your house is burning, who cares whether it's a policy or a process? You just want the fire department there, and that's what we demand. But once we determined that it wasn't a policy violation, we have put the processes in place to determine how we're going to correct this, to make sure that it doesn't happen again. The one thing of comfort to me was we had one of our most senior persons working this incident that night. Incidentally, within a week after this event, she received an incredible commendation from a Brigadier General of the Army about her tenacity to research and to problem solve. And if I have an employee like that who struggled for three to five minutes to figure out which department to come to, it shows that there really was a process problem in place. And again, that process problem is being resolved. It doesn't help the folks who are standing there watching their house burn. We can't go back and change it, but we are dedicated to making sure that this issue does not occur again. We found approximately five to six additional streets on the Falls Church-Fairfax line that encountered the same situation, and we have manually corrected that. The other thing that I think is important is we are, in a sense, getting dumbed down by technology. And so it underscored in our dispatch center that every once in a while, we need to do structured exercises where we go old-school, and people learn how to pull out the old-map books and do things in a manual process, and that becomes second nature. They don't have to think their way through it. But again, along with Mr. Brown, I offer my utmost apologies, and this is really embarrassing for us, but we are learning, and in the end, it makes us stronger and better.
Well, thank you very much. I think we all appreciate you all coming out today and taking responsibility and learning from mistakes and making things better. Public safety is job one for everyone, I think, in this room or certainly at this table, so we really appreciate it. Let me open it up to any questions. Does anyone on Council have any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Hi, thank you for your report. My question is just about how do Fairfax and Arlington fire departments interact at places like that? Should there have been an opportunity for a Fairfax fire agent to go to that spot?
Absolutely, and in fact, Arlington County enjoys what we call an automatic aid agreement with Fairfax County, which includes the City of Falls Church. So when you have a structure fire, there's more than one unit that responds, more than just the units out of the City of Falls Church Fire Station respond. I used to work at the Dunloring Fire Station in Fairfax County, spent 30 years with Fairfax Fire. So our system is set up to actually dispatch both Arlington County units out of Station 6 in Falls Church and Fairfax County units to addresses in the City of Falls Church, and it's automatic. We have a system, it's called CAD to CAD, Computer Aided Dispatch System to Computer Aided Dispatch System. So we can continually monitor the units from Fairfax County that are in-service, available response. So it's an automatic response. So we put the call out, Fairfax gets it, they dispatch it on their channel, and they send the units. So in the case, if Falls Church would have been out on a call, a Fairfax unit would have been first, in fact, it would have been Dunloring, would have been second due, is what we call into that address.
So then, when the first phone call that Mrs. Dorsey made went to Fairfax, could they not have just responded? Or is the procedure that they automatically send it to Arlington?
Could they have?
Or should they have?
That's kind of up for discussion, I would say. The call legitimately was ours in Arlington County to dispatch. In order not to confuse the situation, I'm sure that the Fairfax dispatchers rightfully sent it to Arlington for us to take care of.
So have you, and if these five or six other areas that you've identified, have you been able to coordinate with Fairfax on those and just ensure that each of those addresses is in the right jurisdiction now?
Yes, we continually, in fact, Mr. Mulholland today met with the 911 directors of the entire region. These types of issues are discussed at those kinds of meetings. I wasn't at the meeting with him today, but we're in constant contact with our colleagues around the region. And in fact, the 911 director in Fairfax was the 911 director in Arlington prior to taking that job. So we all know each other, and there's constant communication between the centers and between public safety officials in this region.
And then, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay. And it's just to Chief Gavin, because you know better than anybody else, all these little ins and outs of the streets in Falls Church. So have you had a chance to coordinate with the Falls Church Police just to make sure that?
We met with Chief Gavin last week.
So you've got all those little, every little last street?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Could you go back to the TikTok you were giving us? There the three hang-ups where you all tried to call back to some number, do you think that was a number related to this call?
We don't know.
Or was that just some random number? You just, coincidence that at the same time of the hour of the middle of the night?
I believe that evening, there were multiple cellphone calls that were made. Again, the uniqueness of the jurisdiction, when you, in that particular area, when you call, you may hit a cell tower in Fairfax County, or you may hit a cell tower in Falls Church. It just is hit or miss in that location. So it appears that perhaps some calls were made that were routed through the cell company to Arlington. My best guess is that contact was made subsequently with Fairfax, and when we were trying to do our callbacks, that's why there was no response, because the callers were already on the phone with Fairfax County.
You mean the Dorsey's were on the phone?
Yes.
With Fairfax County?
Yes.
So you were getting basically a busy signal, or a can't connect, at least?
We were, I believe that they were getting voicemails back. They would kick in the voicemail, so...
The reason I'm asking is, you know, for anybody who's in a similar situation, you know, what do you tell people to do? I mean, if...
Please, please don't hang up. That's the first thing.
Well, just, please don't hang up and don't be talking to somebody else either. I mean...
So, yes, sir. The reality is, because we were short-staffed, we had multiple calls coming in from multiple incidents at that time. We have a board that shows how many calls are in queue. If all the 911 call-takers are busy, if you call, you get a message saying, "All call-takers are busy, please hold." So that may have been part of it. If you then say, "Well, I don't want to hold, I need to talk to somebody," I call back. First of all, that moves you back into the back end of the queue, but in this case, it may have then generated a call to Fairfax County, which was a good thing, because someone answered. There were multiple anomalies with the call routing. The very first call that we got transferred from Fairfax County, when we answered, we heard, "This is Fairfax County with a 911 transfer regarding a fire." At some point, the callers dropped off. So there was still communication between the two dispatch centers, but the call from the caller dropped. We've not been able to replicate that. On one of the subsequent transfers, the automatic number identification and the automatic location information, which is supposed to transfer with the call, did not show up. So there were kind of some one-off things. I don't want to say this in any way to say this is the cause. These were just a couple additional factors that I think affected the complexity, perhaps caused some confusion, as my dispatchers and call-takers were kind of trying to work through what in the world was going on.
Okay, well, that does sound like a mess. Yesterday, I think, I was resetting my phone and got a prompt to type in my address for 911 purposes, it said. So if you make a cellphone call, the tower will be able to tell exactly what the address, what the address of your cellphone is. Is that, what you're telling us is that even though I have done that now, because of the CAD problem that you had, it would have known where the, it wouldn't have known where the address was in this instance, right? It would have not, it would not have known that it was in the city.
That's a great question, and to what you're referring is actually a new feature that's on many phones called Wi-Fi calling, so you can actually place a phone call over your Wi-Fi network. The danger of that is you register a very specific address to that. So you may be at Starbucks in Orlando, Florida, on their Wi-Fi, place a call. It will actually route to, if your home address is Falls Church, it will route to the Falls Church 911 center.
Yeah, I wondered about that, which is when I said it, I wondered, is this the wisest thing to do? What do you all advise in that, in that situation?
I've turned mine off.
So do not pay attention to what the prompt tells you to do, of course.
You want to make sure that the calling over Wi-Fi setting is disabled, or if you're comfortable with the fact that it's going to send, route you to the wrong place, then it's a risk management question.
That's a practical benefit. I will go disable mine, because I wondered that when I said it, like, how would they know where I was? If I'm in Tennessee and I call, are they going to think I'm in Falls Church? So for people who are living in the City of Falls Church especially, then the five and six streets, I mean, I feel like there's five or six streets in my neighborhood that straddle the county and city lines. Do we, is, do we have like an inventory of all the streets that we share between the county and, I mean, between Fairfax County and Arlington County? It's got to be more than five or six, right?
I think there were five or six addresses that you had said the correction was.
There were five or six streets, and again, to clarify without getting hyper-technical, the way the CAD system works is, our CAD system, and most CAD systems work, is they look at the closest intersection, and they route from that intersection. It's probably something to do with the efficiency of getting the fire department or medical services in. So it could very well be that there's multiple streets where part of the street is in Falls Church, part of the street is in Fairfax County. However, if the closest intersection is in Falls Church, then the CAD will route to Falls Church. So we found five to six incidences where the closest intersection that it was choosing which, or which agency to send it to, that intersection was on the other side of the line. What we found is that this is an interesting environment. Property lines change. We use the Northern Virginia Regional GIS database, and even in looking at that, we found some discrepancies where county, city lines, not just Falls Church and Fairfax, but other places, didn't always align. So we continue to methodically work through that. But in this case, we are talking about specifically those streets where we identified these parts of the street are in Falls Church. The center line, the point that we, that we generally use, the intersection, is in Fairfax. So we went in and literally split that street in the CAD system so that it will reflect appropriately when you're on this side of the line. It will provide the appropriate information so we can route the correct firehouse there.
Okay, so I guess, I mean, I don't want to hog the phone here, but I guess the question going forward then is, you know, for everybody who lives in the City of Falls Church on a street which has some point that connects with Arlington or Fairfax County, do those folks, you know, get rung up the right way when they make a 911 call?
If they border Arlington County, it's not an issue, because we're the public safety answering point for both the city, so...
Unless, you know, unless you guys are short that night, and you got to put people on hold, and it gets kicked out to Fairfax, right? I mean, there is some scenario where Fairfax would respond first if you can't. Anyway, more details than you want to go into, I can tell now is not the time to do that. But the other thought is, I mean, there are a lot of people whose literal property straddles the county line. Fairfax Falls Church, I mean, I don't know where those people register. Is it strictly related to where they are, you know, on the street? Is it a street that corners out of the county? Maybe you'll say yes to that, and that's good. But particularly people whose actual homes straddle the county line, I would, I would be anxious if I, you know, had this happen to the Dorsey's about who would come, you know, if I made a 911.
Well, the closest, the closest, it's not about who's going to come, because the closest units are going to come regardless of political subdivision. We've got plenty of areas in Arlington County where, let's say Bailey's Crossroads, which is a Fairfax County Fire Station, is closer than an Arlington Station. So it's always the closest unit. There are areas in the county where the Falls Church Fire Station that border over in the McLean area, that Falls Church can get there, and other Arlington units. So it's really not a matter of who's going to come, it's going to be the closest unit. In this case, it's who's going to send them? Is it Arlington 911 center, or is it Fairfax? And that's where we got wrapped around the axle on that night.
Ah-huh, yeah, yeah.
Not who's going to come.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well...
The lineup would have been the same.
The only other thought that I have is, seems kind of obvious, I guess, but, you know, we did annex some land or boundary adjusted, that's the politically correct way to say it. We annexed land that includes our new high, our high school.
Right, yeah.
Just want to make sure that, you know, all the computers and brainiacs know that, you know, the City of Falls Church's high school is in the City of Falls Church now.
In the City of Falls Church.
We ensured that was accounted for, sir.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, Mr. Z, and then Ms. Oliver, or, I'll tell you what I didn't see, but go ahead, Ms. Oliver, then Mr. Z.
I just have a quick question about the technology. You referred to the CAD system, is that specific to Arlington, or is that a system that is shared in the region?
It is Arlington County-specific computer-aided dispatch. Fairfax County uses a different one. However, the two are connected, so we have CAD to CAD sharing. There's a message translator that sits in the middle that allows for fire calls, information to flow between. So we can message directly into Fairfax's system if we need to.
Well, if you all examined the CAD system and made the updates on the jurisdiction, did that get transferred to Fairfax?
No, not for that database.
Okay, and so then how do we make sure that also gets transferred to Fairfax?
I'm happy to reach across with my Fairfax colleagues and make sure that they do the similar process on their side. I can recommend that they do. I shouldn't say I can make sure that they will. I can recommend that they do so.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Hardy, did you have something? Okay, Mr. Z, and then Ms. Dorsey, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming out and ensuring that we actually hear what you've been able to find, and it's been very illuminating. I just really have a, have a simple request to make. I think that, you know, human beings, what they are on a Saturday night, that if you have, you're down because of whatever reason, that you go back and figure out what kind of workarounds you can have, so that your staffing is adequate to the task at hand. Of course, it's probably an evening that you figured it's going to be light, and of course, that's when everything happens. The other thing that I would ask you to do is, as you mentioned, that once someone in a moment of panic or excitement or desperation says, "There are no answers on the phone," hangs up and calls somebody else, that you have a message going back that tells them that they have to stay on the line and tell them how important it is, because I would imagine I would do the same thing. If 911's not answering, you know, I'm going to keep calling until something happens, so... And please don't say your call is very important to us. Do something else that...
It doesn't say that.
Okay.
It says, "Please stay on the phone, your call will be answered."
I would urge you to do something more than that. If you hang up, you'll move to the back of the queue and you'll lose your spot, or something else that impresses the urgency of, and the importance of being on that line.
I think this incident, along with some other things, has underscored to us the need to re-educate. The timing is perfect. We're coming up on the 50th anniversary of 911. I think there's a lot of folks who take 911 for granted. They don't really understand what it is, how it works, what the expectations are. So I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to leverage that and say, this, when you call 911, you may potentially get a busy message. If you do, please don't hang up. We can explain to them why, along with some other expectations of what happens once the call is received, but that is, that is great advice.
Yes, I would say, please, for your own safety and protection, don't hang up the phone. Thank you.
I've just got one or two questions, and then I'll ask Ms. Dorsey to come forward. She wanted to say a few things. One, is there any coordination needed with the cellphone companies themselves? Is that something that still needs to happen, or is that really an outside issue that doesn't relate to what occurred on that night? In other words, the cell towers and what they identify as where you are and where you're not, is that part of the issue that occurred in any way?
In this particular situation, no. I mean, the answer to your question is, there still needs to be a lot of work done, and there is a lot of great communications with the wireless carriers. In this case, we knew the address.
Okay.
You know, where you were calling from, the Dorsey's were very clear. When they, when they called, we got the address, we knew where the call was originating from. This was a failure on our part, and it had nothing to do with trying to figure out where the incident was.
Okay. Also, is there a process in place when lots get subdivided? For example, there's going to be new homes at the end of this actual street at some point in the future, maybe in the next year or two. How would you guys know about that, or would the same issue arise when the new house gets put, where you haven't manually put it into the computer?
Typically, we'll get notified through our community planning, housing, and development, through the building official, folks that do site plans. They'll notify the fire department, and then the fire department has a communications officer that will relay that information to us, so...
And that's the same thing in Falls Church? So our building official would notify you?
Your, it would, it would most likely be your fire marshal that would notify our fire department, and we know your fire marshal very well. He's a retired fire officer from Arlington, so...
Okay. One last thought, is there any thought to, like, regional 911 to avoid some of these issues?
There's, I think that's, that's, that obviously is a vision. A lot of communities around this country have gone to regional 911 centers. Certainly, one of the systems that will come up for replacement in Fairfax and in Alexandria and in Arlington is our computer-aided dispatch system. Right now, Arlington is engaged in a, an acquisition with the City of Alexandria to buy a combined 911 phone system. I think you folks are aware of that. I think things like the radio system and CAD are just natural elements of the overall communication systems, the system that would be ripe for some type of consolidation. It happens all around the country. There's no reason why it can't happen here.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to go ahead and ask Ms. Dorsey to come forward. Normally, as I mentioned earlier, the public isn't invited to speak, but she's got a special interest. Wherever you'd like to, maybe right next to Mr. Shields. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you this evening. I will keep my remarks brief. My name is Stephanie Dorsey. I'm the resident at 1002 Railroad Avenue. I'm also a taxpayer in this city. As taxpayers, we remain very concerned about the safety of our neighborhood following the fire at our house on Sunday, August 6th. This concern is only underscored even further because of the future development of 12 new structures at the end of a one-lane dead-end road on a 12-foot road. Every citizen should have... Every citizen should have faith and confidence when they call 911 that someone will be on the other line to help them, not put them on hold, not disconnect them. By the grace of God, my family was able to get out of our house without any respiratory distress or any other bodily injury. As the windows were popping out of my house, the black smoke and the flames were coming out. I said to 911, "We need help right now. Where are the fire trucks?" I have never been so terrified in my entire life and felt so helpless and so uncared about. Again, we remain concerned about the future of what's going to happen and a future negligence on other streets in the city. I hope no other Falls Church families have to experience the terror, the fear, the aftermath, the frustration. We have a senior in high school and his senior year is going to be completely transplanted. He's not going to have that normal experience as a result of this fire. Our house burned much longer than it should have because of this delayed response, causing such smoke damage that it has to be torn down to the studs. We won't be able to move back into our house until May or June. This is beyond disruptive to our lives and the lives of our children. I appreciate you coming here this evening and taking responsibility for this, but it still does not erase the seriousness of this issue. This is not acceptable. I ask you to please implement these protocol changes and that the city does something, especially with the addition of these new houses, so such a tragedy doesn't happen again and result in any more serious consequences. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much and we certainly will do all we can to get you back in your house as soon as we can. Unless there are any other...
Could I, of course... Were we going to talk about the, you know, apparatus element of this? I mean, in our earlier discussions, there was questions about sequencing of trucks and so forth. Is that not on tonight or are you all...
My understanding was it was just the communication part that you all, and this is from Mr. Shields, but my understanding, as you know, that seemed like there were some issues possibly as well because it's a very narrow street and that we were going to get an after-action report as relates to that as well.
So, that's a separate deal.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that was my understanding, it was going to be separate.
That would probably be more appropriate for the fire chief to address those areas.
Okay, well, I would like, thank you, gentlemen, for coming. I just want to say that 28 years ago, you all responded to a fairly similar situation in the basement of my house and, you know, water incursion, smoke fire, so forth. Fortunately, I'm on West Street and everybody knew where to find me. But I do think it would be helpful to have a, you know, discussion with the fire chief about responses, you know, on streets that are challenging to get through, of which there are many in the little city here. So, thanks.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions? If not, I'll thank you again for coming. We hope this is a continuing discussion that if we have further questions, we can have a dialogue back and forth to make sure that the city is as safe as possible for everyone wherever they might be within the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you, thank you.
If I may just, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention that in a couple of months, Jack Brown's retiring and he has served this region for over 40 years in the public safety venue and I just wanted to extend my great thanks for being a mentor, being a strategic foresight for everything that he's done. He has been across the world on a number of man-made and natural disasters. He has served us not only in Fairfax County, Loudoun County, Arlington County, and here in Falls Church. This isn't what I wanted him to be highlighted on in his last moments here in Falls Church, but we wanted to wish you a great retirement and many blessings ahead moving forward, as many as you've left behind because you have left a legacy of systems and people with great faith in emergency management. And this is a gentleman that actually established emergency management in this region after 9/11 and so I wanted to tip my hat to you and thank you for that.
And thank you both for your service and we appreciate you coming out this evening. Why don't we go ahead and move on to our next item, Mr. Shields, which is the Falls Church Cable Access Board. And I understand we have a number of folks there and to the extent there's room at the table, you all are welcome to join us.
The entire board to come up and join the council at the table.
I think we can find room for all of you if you'd like to come on up.
And just so everybody knows.
And if there's anyone else and employees, they are welcome to come as well.
When we have boards and commissions come to the council, but generally, everybody comes up.
I'm going to put a wireless here just... Yeah, there's water over there, Ken. Some extra wireless just to stay from passing. And of course, we are recording. Please remind your mic. We're speaking.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming out and thank you for your service to our community. I know we've had some ups and downs, I think, in recent months, but we're here to try to work things out and improve things and have the best cable access TV we can possible. So, thank you all for coming out. Why don't we start with some introductions? I'm not sure everyone knows everyone. Maybe we could just go around the table just to make sure everyone is familiar with everyone at the table. I'm Dave Tarter, I'm one city council and the mayor, if you want to go over.
Karen Oliver.
Letty Hardy.
Wyatt Shields, city manager.
Amanda Lovins.
Ken Felton.
Richard Rankin.
Jerry Barrett.
Melissa Robison, board member and secretary.
Dan Z.
Phil Rankin.
Mary Beth Connolly.
So, again, thank you all for coming out and for your good work for our community. Shields, do you have any introductory remarks you wanted to make before we get started or...
Well, if I could, just to say a few things by way of introduction, on August 14th, the council will recall Cindy Mester did give a report to the council on the findings from her work with staff and with the Cable Access Board to try to facilitate discussion about resolving some of the concerns and issues that have been a concern really probably for several years now. And so, Cindy gave that report and the council asked that we have a fuller work session discussion on the status. And I would note just, you know, from the council and your work plan for this year, your desire was to have boards and commissions come before you on a regular basis just to make sure that everyone is working well together and that you're hearing from your boards and commissions about what they're working on and vice versa so that they can hear what the council's priorities are. I would state, I think probably for everybody in the room, what our goal is, is to have the cable, the TV station be open to the public and available for talented people to come and be creative and to do great works, to express themselves in the audiovisual arts. And it's like so many programs that we have in the city where the city might provide the facility and the city will provide some staff support, but it's really the public that comes in and does the creative work. And that's the model that's been so successful in so many ways across the city. I think arguably, the best things that the city does are follow that basic model. We have had issues with the Cable Access Board. People have expressed displeasure about the way it's been run and so I asked Cindy Mester to really, to dedicate herself to trying to work through those issues. And some of that, I think probably some of the most productive aspects of that have been in a real granular way. What is a concern and how can we address it? And that is an attachment to the packet of trying to write down on paper what those concerns are and what concrete steps we can do, either by changing a rule or clarifying a rule or having a process so that everybody understands how we can go forward. That hopefully has borne some fruit. I think all of us are sincere in our hope that our time on this effort is bearing fruit. And then there's some larger structural and governance issues that Cindy has made some recommendations on as well. I don't know that everybody agrees with them. Some of them I might have some questions about, but I think Cindy really did try to take an independent view of this and in good faith try to work through those issues. So, Mayor, if it's okay, Cindy could give just a quick overview of, a summary of those, not in the detail that she did on the 14th, but just to go through a couple of those key ones that I know she's been still having discussions with the board on and then hear from the board if that's acceptable to everybody.
All right, sounds good. Cindy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Wyatt noted, you do have my report in the package, which was a summary and page two has the six recommendations I'll highlight in a moment. The tracking report is the other item that Mr. Shields referenced and that has a lot of the granular tasks about staff hours, training, equipment asset, and governance structures. You also had in your packet the August 14th response to the FCC TV Process Forward Final Report as submitted by the Access Corporation. Ken Felton and Richard Rankin were at that meeting and presented that. So, that's in your packet as well. And I do want to acknowledge that Bob Lofter Thurn acknowledged that he couldn't be here today when he and I spoke earlier and he sent me an email that if an appropriate time comes up, he said I could share it with you all and I certainly will forward it with you and I'm glad that our board members are here because with his email, we round out a strong community base. So, with that, on page two of the memo that I put in your packet for tonight, I summarized some key recommendations as Mr. Shields indicated that came out of our over six months' worth of review together with our community partners. One is to move forward and really strengthen FCC TV. The one clear message I got that this is a great community resource, is good for school programming and resources for our students and educating the community on school opportunities and programs. It's a great resource for general government. It is, of course, obviously our transparency for council meetings, planning commission and so forth, but it's even more than that. And over the time I've been working with the station, it's really exciting to see both schools and general government, new programs with students, new things on our pleas, just using the resource much more as another tool for engaging our community. And the third leg, of course, is our public access and we have a great opportunity for a lot of great programming in that arena. And so, the one thing I found at the end of this, getting to know everybody a lot more is really appreciating the value of that. And so, one of my recommendations is we need to work together to make it stronger and better. And Genevieve and Andy, who regrettably are out actually training and filming tonight and couldn't be here, our two full-time staff, they said it really nicely, where we have this resource, we need to capitalize on it and make it the best station in the area and they are committed to that as well. And so, in doing that, there was two sort of granular items I recommended is re-engaging in the steering committee. That was a structure in which could do the macro policy stuff and it had collapsed and it wasn't good communication or trust anymore. So, that needs to be back in place as part of this process. We identified a charter, who's attending, the rotation of the minutes, a lot of good foundational stuff that can build on. I know in talking to Bob Lofter Thurn, he has some future ideas on how it could be made better, but as it stands right now, we need to get at least a good steering committee back functioning. There's been two meetings, one in June and just one last week in an effort to start that going. The first one, two of the members were able to attend and my understanding from this last one, all three of our partners were represented. So, that's in the right start. There's a lot of things in the tracking chart where we came to consensus and we just need to implement them. And then there's some bigger things, like things that were assigned to the steering committee to work on and we really need to re-engage that governance. We need to move from the Process Forward facilitation piece that I was working with and get back to the steering committee running this tripartite resource. As I worked with the Access Board and I know in recent meetings in minutes, I think it was the March, there was a really coalescing that I read and heard about about getting back to the mission of our public access. So, my recommendation is that we really need to support, as a three-party partnership, that goal and that mission, which I'm going to read it so I don't misrepresent what I read from the minutes. The FCCAC primary mission, to serve and work with citizens interested in producing and watching locally-produced programs. And I think that's so true. There are such great resources that I've seen on there, some recent programs, so old ones, and recently have heard about some new filming and I think that's really exciting. In order to do that, I think we need to work with, and one of my recommendations, increasing their membership base and increasing producers and editors. And within that, in the tracking chart, we identified a training methodology, syllabus and so forth, and we can work with Rexon Park and we can register that and get the fees to cover the costs. And then, of course, increase operational funding resources for the Access Board, which could be part of the membership and the fundraising ride, and that would solve the issue that we have where PEG grants, which come from the Cox and Verizon franchise agreement that you all have authorized, is dedicated only to capital expenses. So, there needs to be an operating budget to balance that. And that ties to recommendation three, we need to really make sure we're certifying because it's part of the legal franchise agreements that the PEG money is only used for capital. The other two things that I think are were critical in the discussion is what is the Access Board's makeup? And my recommendation is to no longer have school board and council appointees to the independent nonprofit. They are a standalone 501(c)(3). I think their board should be made up and elected from the membership, which hopefully is a larger and robust one, and that if council and school board elects, you could still have your liaisons like you do for other boards and commissions, but not co-mingle roles and responsibilities because does a council appointee have the responsibility to the nonprofit or to city council? And so, I think it's just confusing in governance, but we have good people still involved, so my recommendation is to allow terms to expire and just don't reappoint and make a conscious decision, a recommendation, you know, you all execute a new policy, but no more appointments to the Access Board and just retain your liaison. That would help with clarifying the governance structure and roles and then going forward, because I did label this Process Forward for a purpose because I really want to be going forward, then if we need to refine and enhance it, we've got a mechanism in which to do that. And then there was my other significant recommendation is that the staffing, the money, the administration, the management, all the benefits, stay under the government structure. As I put in this recommendation, I said city, general government, because that's currently where it's housed, we're in the middle of a budget, that's where it makes sense. I know there's discussions and it's been on the school side or the general government side, but I do recommend it needs to stay in the government structure because the primary purpose, I would hope, for the Access Board remains on the working with the community and producing, not the administrative piece. We've got qualified, great qualified staff that are getting good benefits here and that's a way to retain them in a not highly-paid area. The other thing we would just need to cautiously look at if we were going to change it anyway because the school system retirement is not the same as the general governments. And in the past, when it's been changed, the employee actually lost years of service in retirement and we can't do that to future employees. So, that in a nutshell is the core recommendations. There's obviously a whole lot more detail here and I'm glad that we're having this opportunity for a dialogue and hopefully decision points for going forward.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And I tell you now, why don't we hear from the cable board? I know you all are eager to talk about some of these issues and we are to hear from you. So, Mr. Felton, I don't know if you want to take the lead or how your body wants to speak.
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. Cindy, thank you. It wasn't as if you had nothing else to do about a year ago. You have a whole lot of things on your plate and you have taken this on and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. I think I speak for the entire board when I say that we are anxious to proceed to the implementation stage and in fact, at our regular monthly board meeting on Wednesday, we're going to talk about some of that and how we have been holding back rather than moving toward that until Cindy's report was finished. We agree on many of the things that have been decided and that Cindy has reported, but we do have reservations on some other things. Rather than take those one at a time and take your time on something that might be very arcane, let me just say that we should begin implementing while we work on those things and reach agreement or agree that we're not going to agree, but we must get past those things. But the report doesn't really deal with one critical fact and that is that FCCAC is an independent 501(c)(3) public charity. an independent 501(c)(3) public charity, registered, housed here in Virginia, and we are a partner to the tri-party agreement. There is no such thing as a tri-party agreement without the schools, the municipality, and the Citizen Access Board. But something important needs to be added to that, and that is that we are the one element that is guided more by federal communications law than by local or state, or in this case, Commonwealth law. We have an obligation to see that any citizen who wishes to create a video, whether it's a religious program, we have a program on regularly, a woman chanting "Seek Prayers," whether it is political, doesn't matter, so long as it meets acceptable community standards. In other words, would you like your young family to see it? We're guided by the First Amendment. That's our job, and we have found several times when that seemed not to be what the, at least one of the other parties was interested in. We have to work that through. We have to be able to have people come in and program what they want. Now, if they come in with something unreasonable in the way of needing equipment or something like that, that's a different story. But if they're coming in saying, "I want to talk about X from this standpoint," even though it may be obnoxious to all of us around this table, whatever their political spiel or religious leaning might be, they have a right, and we have to defend it. Now, at our next board meeting, which is Wednesday night, we plan to go ahead with our plan to hold a community meeting, three purposes. One, to explain exactly what a PEG station is and how the citizen can fit in. Two, we want to explain our role, what we can do and what we can't do, and we want to use that then to recruit prospective producers. Quite honestly, at this time, we really don't have a shortage of people who want to produce. We have lost a lot of producers. They have just plain gotten tired, they've given up. I felt it was my responsibility to provide people who wanted to leave with a good opportunity. And therefore, I said, "Look, if you're intent upon leaving, don't try to close us down, don't try to vote to terminate the PEG agreement, just leave." Thank you very much. And that's what they have done. Our option always is, as it's the city's option at any time, to vote to leave the PEG agreement. If we did that, that would trigger a one-year period. If you did it, it would trigger the same one-year period where we could review and sort out differences. Some of the most angry people, who felt that they were the most aggrieved, have moved on. Others will be moving on. Fine, we will work with what we have here, and we will find new people. The second thing I wanted to do was remind us all that those of us on the board were not put on the board to dissolve the PEG agreement in Falls Church City or to leave the PEG agreement. We have that first obligation. We are going to try to pursue that. There are some things that we want you to consider seriously. Number one, and I say this to all of you in an unhappy way, we believe it is never acceptable for city employees or city officers to shout at citizens, citizens, volunteers. It just isn't acceptable. We wonder about your oversight on that, and we think frankly that if you just put the word out, "Don't shout at people," they might whine and complain about that. That may stop it. That should make relations much better. We also need to make certain that some of the things that have happened in the past and are now happening again are put to rest right now. When people make an appointment to go and visit the studio and learn about the equipment, I tend to be the one to hear about it when they have a bad experience. And the bad experience usually is, they made an appointment for 3:00 on a Wednesday afternoon, they got there, there was no answer. They telephoned, and there was no response. I have an email from a gentleman here in the city who claims that three times he left a message and didn't get a return call. That's not the way we want to do business. We are forced to depend on the city to put our good face forward. People assume that we are in charge of the staff, and therefore, they blame us when there are problems. So I would ask you to work with your city employees. Next is our treasurer, Richard Rankin. He and I are the two board members who are not there to be producers. He was encouraged to join because he knows finance and insurance, and I was encouraged to join by Barb Cram, who said, "You're good at organizing and reorganizing things." Well, I have to admit, failure so far at that. But Richard wants to discuss our plan to actually speed up resolving the remaining areas of confusion or disagreement between the city and the Access Board.
Thank you, Ken. Thanks to the City Council for your continued oversight and interest in public access, community broadcasting. FCCAC is largely in agreement with the reports. However, the tracking chart matrix does not identify which recommendations are still outstanding. It also does not identify how we're going to achieve our goals. FCCAC is not a city agency. While FCCAC has agreed to follow the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, the city should not expect to control the operational decisions of FCCAC. Public access broadcasting was created by federal regulations in the 1980s, seems like a long time ago. And FCCAC exists because federal laws call for entities that provide public programs to be free of government entanglement. The fewer attempts at government regulation of FCCAC, the more likely the goals of robust public access can be achieved. At this point in this 10-month process, we believe it would be helpful to the PEG partners and the City Council to consider an impartial, independent mediator with knowledge of public access history and operating processes, who could provide us all with an assessment of how to resolve these current impasses and how we might be able to move forward this year. We believe further consideration should be extended to the appointment of an outside impartial, independent mediator sometime this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Of course, please.
Can people hear me? Just a second. Trigger in. Hello? Good? Okay. So I want to say thank you, everyone, for listening to what we're bringing to the council tonight. I would have to admit, from as being a board member, I was not an acting participant in the working group, and I did not see this recommendation until it was presented, until after it was presented. So as a responsible board member, I think that we should go back during our meeting on Wednesday and just make sure we're all in agreement as to what we're asking for, if that makes sense. Because I didn't know we were going to ask for an independent mediator, and this is probably my fault for not being as involved as I should have been as a board member. I've been focusing on trying to shoot video, basically. And my thought would be that we would get all on the same page and make sure that when we're coming to council meetings, that we are all on the same page.
Why would we expect that? And let me tell you why I don't expect that. Mike Palmrose, the former station manager, said to me once that producers are artsy-craftsies.
Ken, this is not appropriate. This is just not appropriate. We talked about not rehashing these things.
Let me finish, and then you can have your turn. And what we have in producers are people who have a very focused agenda. They want to produce something. They don't like limits, rules, or regulations. Well, our job, my job, your job, your job, your job, and your job, is to be the buffer between those two. And that's one of the things we're going to try to figure out, how to be the buffer between the rules and regulations and those artsy-craftsy people. Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So why don't we go ahead and hear from anyone else who wants to speak on that side of the table?
Yeah. The only thing I do want to say is to concur with Melissa, that there's a lot of statements saying that we are asking for things, and unfortunately, there has not been a lot of consensus among the board. We are working on coming to consensus within the board itself, going off of a lot of these recommendations, definitely a lot of them, if not all of them, for some of us, and working on our own strategic plan that will detail the hows of continuing that, what's laid out the tracking report, trying to work out those details within the board itself for the things that are our responsibility. So I do want to let council know that, that there is still some consensus to become to by the board itself, and that we are working on a lot more detailed plan to build on the tracking report as per what's on our plate, and that we are working on that. Thanks.
Jared, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I, Richard and I are the two board members that were appointed by you, and so our jobs are on the line.
Watch what you say.
Which way you want it to go.
Remember, I said not the person, just the positions in the future.
And the other remark about mediators, I never met one I trusted. Anyway, I think what Cindy has done in the meetings that we called just internally Cindy's meetings, Richard and I were the two representatives on that of our board. And I think she's built up, with me in particular, an enormous amount of confidence that the city wants to make improvements and is not making every effort to frustrate us. I think those meetings, I mean, it took a long time to get the model of men, primarily because of her busy schedule, but I'm very satisfied with where we came out and with the offer to continue to have discussions to improve the thing. I'm delighted with that, and I think we're in good shape. And it fits in with our own planning, which at our annual meeting, we'll roll out plans that we're starting to make already, and we will continue to on Wednesday. So I think we're in good shape, and I think we need to work among ourselves for more consensus.
Okay. Thank you. Also, congratulations on your 65th wedding anniversary as well, so it's pretty remarkable. Do we have questions on our side of the table or comments or thoughts? Vice Mayor Connelly, do you have something?
There's a couple of things I'm confused about, but, and I'm not quite clear exactly where some of the disconnect is. I would agree that employees should not shout at people, nor should volunteers shout. No one should shout at anybody. I think we're all in agreement on that one, so let's check that off and put that on the Process Forward, no shouting. I think some of the bad experiences, you know, if people go and there's not someone on the door, could there not just be a sign next to the door that says, "If you have an appointment and you were not here, please call this number and report your problem?" And that way, they wouldn't come to you and complain, there would be actually someone to call and complain to. Would that solve that problem?
We have suggested that.
And if there's a recent example, then we do need it reported. We reviewed that quite detailed during the working process. And Genevieve and Andy and Susan have all committed to a process. Item number 14 on the tracking chart speaks to that staffing and the escalation, and we really clearly reiterated, Susan can't work on managing if she doesn't know about the issue. And we haven't, you know, they tried to be there, we have the set times, as you see, that are dedicated for the appointments, willing to make them in between. If something comes up on another shoot, they're trying to have better messaging so folks know. But if there's a specific recent concern, then I really ask the Access Board to report it to Susan, please.
Okay. So my other concern is just around what the taxpayer money is paying for. Because you are a nonprofit board, a 501(c)(3), then there has to be a way to look at the money that the citizens of Falls Church are paying us. Where should that taxpayer money be directed? And I know there's PEG money also, so it gets a little bit confusing, but can we just talk a little bit about that? Where does the taxpayer money go in this situation?
Let me give you a little overview.
Thank you.
And then we can open it up. So there's operating money, and there's PEG money. So appropriated under council's budget on the general government side for Office of Communications is a call center for FCC TV that covers the two full-time staff people, and then our part-time freelancers that are filming, council, planning commission, and school board meetings. And then it also has a nominal amount of money for operating, training, batteries, camera repairs, that kind of just operating. That's local taxpayer money that is funding the staff. And then in the tracking chart, we allocated how that staff resources are used and documented that. Then you have the PEG grants that comes from the Cox and the Verizon Franchise Agreement, not RCN. So two of the three. Of those two franchise agreements, it's a certain percentage of their overall revenue, and it's 3%, and it is divided 1/3, 1/3, 1/3. So 1/3 for education, 1/3 for government, 1/3 for public. The public in our, under the franchise agreement, it just says "public." Under the separate tripartite agreement, which is the partnership that was locally adopted, not under the franchise agreement or federal law, the three parties have agreed that 1% that's public goes to the Access Corporation. And the federal law specifically designates that for capital. And then your capital is defined as your general government accounting practices. So for the city of Falls Church and the schools, that's $5,000 and a useful life of one year.
Ken, if you want to add anything, or Richard, what do you want to add anything?
We are going to be, we look at PEG stations across the country, and especially our neighbors in Arlington and Fairfax County. And we're going to be looking, we'll start this Wednesday. We've already done some preliminary research, in fact, did it two years ago, looking at how other stations how other stations spend their money, what they receive, what they don't receive. I think what it's going to show is that we will come back and say, gee, Fairfax County gives a lot more to its cable access board in the way of funding, not just in dollars, but in terms of percent of available, than Falls Church City. Gee, Arlington puts a lot more. Well, that's one answer. The other answer is, what can we do here? And I think what we have to do is, we have to sit down, the schools, the city, and we have to say, these are the objectives you have for us. These are the objectives we have for ourselves. Let's work with the city and see how we can budget that so it works for everybody. One of the things that disenchanted the schools was they felt the city was taking too much money and asking them then to buy equipment because they had some extra money in the bank. We bought a little over $120,000 of equipment in the last two fiscal years. Now, we bought that to bring the studio up to first-class quality because we have lots of competitors in this town. Videography is extremely popular, and there are lots of studios. Videography has become, apparently, the new auto mechanics for people who aren't college-bound. We also outfitted the studio at George Mason High School so that it can be used as a classroom. And we bought equipment that we, as access producers, are not going to use. Each year, for the past two years that I have been president, I have sent emails to the schools and to the city saying, if you had a wish list and we had the money, what would you like? And we've even made some recommendations. Neither the city nor the schools have gotten back to me to take us up on that offer. But what we have heard in the meantime is, from the city and the schools both, that their equipment is their equipment, and we shouldn't touch it. We say our equipment is everybody's equipment, and sure, everybody should touch it.
And if I could, this is a clear thing for the steering committee. We have a good policy for how to do budgeting going forward. That's been the discussion. We've also clarified equipment, and I'm encouraged to hear in the strategic planning, one of the things is to actually develop a budget and help us move forward so we know what everybody's bringing to the table to make this a great resource.
Just to follow up a little bit on your question. We get the monies from the different cable operators, and like Ken was saying, we bought the equipment. There's this disagreement about, you can only use monies for capital expenditures. Big disagreement on that. We are all volunteers. We're not city employees. Whenever you serve on the board, you expose yourself to litigation. We procure DNO insurance, directors and officers' insurance. We procure ENO insurance for the station to address any sort of legal obligations that may come our way. That's a big part of our budget. So this is part of the disagreement about what words mean. And to us, we need to have DNO insurance coverage, and most of us would probably leave if we didn't have any DNO insurance. If you know anybody who serves on the homeowner's board of directors or any other sort of directors, you need this sort of coverage in today's society. So this is part of the words meaning different things to different people.
We tend to follow PEG station best practices, and that's easy to find out what they are. The man who wrote the law that enables PEG station is now an adjunct professor at the law school at George Mason University. And we have talked with him, and he has a very different view, shall we say, from the view that the city has. We'll work through that.
My further question on taxpayer money. Is it appropriate that taxpayer money would be paying the insurance of a nonprofit board?
They don't use their money. We use it, the money we get.
They're using the PEG money.
The PEG money we receive from Verizon.
Right. It's city money transferred for capital.
To pay for insurance, or just to pay for capital?
Well, both. Both.
So I think going forward, we need to work so that there's an operating.
The PEG is tax money? Okay. So here's my, there's implications, right. Right. So as a nonprofit, here's just my thought going forward, and I think as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), if you are able to, you're able to raise funds in other ways that the city itself can't, right? Through memberships and through classes at the community center, can you do, if someone registers for a $70 class, can some of the class money then go towards membership in the cable access board? So that's one way to raise money, or to do fundraising, or to do a gala, or to do other things related to fundraising. My understanding of how most nonprofits work is that that's how you do it. You have your people that are really passionate about it, and you raise your funds, and then you operate, and you buy your insurance, and then if there's additional bonus that you have some PEG money coming in to pay some of the equipment, that's awesome. I mean, I know the nonprofit boards that most of us around would love to have PEG money to buy some of the equipment. So I think that we do need to separate the cable board from the city council appointees, and I agree that we need to pull back on having city council and school board appoint people to the cable access board. I think you should really be your own independent board, doing that creative kind of stuff. I think the employees of the station should remain the employees of the city and should be able to run the station and make sure it's open when it's there, but they shouldn't report to the board. They should report to the taxpayers who are paying their salaries. And I think that that is a way forward that will really allow you to be creative, because that's what you want to be, is the producers to be creative and have a system set up that's going to allow you to bring in money, allow you to spend money, and to bring in more producers, and be creative and make TV shows. So that would be my recommendation going forward.
I would just add that's part of our planning. So we have started to set up committees, and I'm actually the chair of the membership committee, and have been in talks in one meeting, one committee meeting, on how to improve the membership, which I know is probably an effort in the past that just had not been being focused on now.
Okay. So I know we have one or two more questions, which we're going to get to, but we probably are not going to solve all the problems tonight, and I appreciate the fact that you all are continuing to work with the staff and with council to try to resolve these issues. Sounds like some good progress has been made, but why don't we try to wrap up after these two questions?
Yeah, unlike normal, I don't actually have very many detailed questions and some general kind of thoughts and comments. It sounds like you guys have more kind of work to do within the board, so I encourage you all to try to reach consensus, but I appreciate hearing from different members of the board tonight. So if you all can't reach consensus, I also want you all to feel okay sharing your thoughts, too, and where you think the process can move forward. I appreciate everyone working together with Cindy on this and the diligence. I think we all share the belief that FCC TV is a valuable community resource and has potential to do so much more. Two things that I want to leave with you all to think about as you do the strategic planning is, I've been reading about how the percentage of cord cutters in the United States has been growing, and is now 1 in 5 Americans are cord cutters. And there's a whole other population of people called cord nevers, people who've never even had cable. I am one of those. And I want to make sure that we think and are thoughtful about how we think about FCC TV, whether it's just pushing content out to YouTube. But it is such a valuable way of engaging the community that I don't want our thinking to be limited to tactical process issues, which I feel confident that you all can work through, but these broader issues on how we can really leverage this as a valuable channel, and not just through cable access, how to think about it in more creative ways. And then the second is really the content and the production, which again is, you know, what you all are passionate about. How do we get this idea or this resource out to the community so that we can boost the content, you know, whether it's through the schools or the community? How do we get more people using this channel? And I feel confident that you all are, you know, committed to the vision of what FCC TV can be, and hope that you all can rally around that unifying vision after we work through a bunch of these process issues. But thank you all for coming out and sharing your ideas with us.
Oliver?
I just wanted to make a general comment that there are two parts of what we're working on here. One is the tripartite agreement, and trying to figure out a way to make that go forward. But to make that go forward, you all, as a 501(c)(3) board, need to be a functioning board. You need to have a plan, you need to know what your role is, and you need to know how you're going to operate. I work in nonprofit financial management. That's what I do. I was a consultant in this for a really long time. The single biggest issue is that most boards get into it because they're passionate about doing. But the role of a board is not to manage staff, and it's not to do. The role of the board is to set policy and to ensure the fiduciary success of the organization. That's fundraising and policy. And those are really, really critical. And if you have the policy and the fundraising, and you get to the point that you can hire your own staff, then you can have people that can do what you want to do, and that can manage the grants from the city and the schools, and work with the other organizations that are part of the tripartite agreement. And that's a really big goal. But until you, as a board, can figure out how to operate in that way, or at least operate as a 501(c)(3) independent organization that does not rely for your operations on other staff, it's going to continue to be an issue. And I would encourage you to focus on the strategic planning for that, and to try to get that sorted out so that we can, as three independent organizations, come to an agreement to provide a service that's so valuable and that's so important to everyone. And I want to make sure that, you know, that we continue to work on this, and that we try to find a way to do this together. And I would encourage you to spend some time within yourselves figuring out how you might redefine your model, and how you might want to try to go forward so that you can be a strong third leg of a tripartite agreement, and that we can find a way to do this all together.
Okay. Well, listen, I tell you, like I said, we appreciate you all coming out today, the great work you do, day in and day out, and we look forward to continuing this discussion. So, did you have some, I'm sorry, Mr. Duncan, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you all for your attention and time dedicated to this, and to the board for showing up. Good luck on Wednesday night. The administrative management question is the only thing I wanted to speak to. You know, my frustration through the five years that I've been on council has been that the schools have sort of not been at the table when it comes to the cable TV station. You know, there's not been an active role by a school board member. My preference would be for the thing to be supervised, managed by the school system, but I don't want to put my finger on the scales. Mostly, you know, what I would hope, we would see this as a tremendous educational asset, and have a closer connection between the cable TV station and the school system. Whoever manages the employees is, I guess, less important than that good work gets done between the generations, the younger generation at school, and the generally, you know, adult types who are working on the cable TV station.
Okay. Well, again, thank you, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you all soon, maybe on TV, who knows? But thanks so much.
FCC TV.
That's right. Okay. Does anyone want to take a break, or should we keep on going?
We're going to need your quick setup just to get things on.
All right. Why don't we take a five-minute break? All right, let's have a seat and go ahead and get started if we can. So our next stop is City Hall. City Hall update. So we are delighted to hear what we got in store for us. Mr. Shields, do you want to run with this, or is someone else going to be doing the presentation?
Well, we want to provide the council with an update. There's no decision requested tonight. This is really an update and a request for comment and input as we're going through the design process. Our focus tonight is on two exterior elevations, for you to see those, and then focus on the council chambers themselves, and design decisions for those chambers. And so we're looking forward to a good productive discussion tonight. There are a few updates also, just of a technical matter that we want to give you as well. I'll let Cindy do that, and then we'll get into the fun stuff.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt and council. James Mack gives his apologies. He just had to leave because he learned his wife headed to the urgent care. So you get me covering his presentation. We have Mike Whitfield here on our project team, Todd and Anna from Studio 27, who are going to get to do most of the conversation in a moment. So just as part of sort of the project update, since we last saw you, we've been to the planning commission for the second time, and on September 5th, they approved the site plan, as well as a parking reduction waiver, because we're just doing the parking around the building, not the whole campus. And so they did a waiver for reducing the parking so we don't have to, by code, almost double the parking on-site, which would take up a whole lot of park. We'll deal with that as a future project, if we want to redo the rear parking lot or do a parking structure back there that could potentially hold an office structure, something like that. But they basically approved, so we're complying with code. September 14th, the BZA approved parking variances. That in particular was for the parking garage, where we have tandem parking for the police officers, because our code doesn't permit tandem parking except by variance, similar to what you have in Pearson Square. This is just approved site plans, so you kind of can see the orientation. We're basically working just around the building. Once again, just for the community, as a refresher, we have the central front entrance and the ramp, which we will have for more detailed rendering and discussion in a moment. The new meeting room, council chamber, court space in the rear over the parking secured parking structure, then full renovation of the existing building, which includes all of the HVAC plumbing, fire sprinklers, ADA, windows, lighting, et cetera. The timeline that we're looking at is, we have finished the variances and site plan. We're now working on the construction documents so that we can get the full price from HIT and their subs for the guaranteed maximum price contract that'll come to council end of November and December, for construction to begin in December. We are also working on contracts that'll come to council for the low-voltage IT cabling, our corridor access, and furnishings and fixtures. Construction to begin in December, a little later than we had planned when we last spoke to you, but that was needed for the variances in the site plan process, and it is still a 12-month process, but we're working to see if we can shorten that. And the other piece we're working to finalize now is the off-site space for staff for office buildings and court, and we will hopefully have that finalized within a week to two and be able to message that out. So with that, the really core part of tonight's discussion is going to turn it over to Todd and Anna, Anna, excuse me. And if you all are all right, we'll leave the lights off so that you can see the screens better, but we do have some renderings of materials here, and if it gets difficult to see the shade of colors, we'll turn the lights on, just let us know. And I can advance for you, or you can advance?
Okay. Thank you. Well, thanks for having us back. We appreciate it. So today, we're going to cut the fun stuff. So one of the primary items we wanted to talk about tonight was the exterior elevations, and then we're going to move quickly through the interior of the building, just at the very entrance, and then we'll move right into chambers, so that we can talk about that in greater detail. But to show you the evolution of the exterior as it's happened through the course of the last couple of months, as we've gone through the value engineering effort, and also some pretty intense discussions relative to ideas for the front facade and site planning, what we've begun to do is, we've come to the option now where we did not do the addition on the front of the building, and so now it's been a question of, how do we delicately touch the front facade of the building and do so thoughtfully? So what we've done is, we've kept the entire front of the building as it is, with the exception of the front entrance stairs, which due to ADA, we need to lift by one riser. And then so that means that we will come flush into the front doors now. So we'll have some small tweaks that we do to the bottom of the woodworking, but all the woodworking and all of that detail is going to be restored, and it'll be just in keeping as it is right now. And then we'll have new limestone steps that lead to the main entrances. We're also adding a large handicap ramp. And with that handicap ramp, we integrated a new masonry wall. We're going to get brick that is as close as it we can to matching the existing building, and then also that'll have a limestone cap across the whole. And then moving to the rear of the building, it's inconsistent with the design that we presented previously. You can see the lower level, which is the base, the parking garage for the secure areas for the judges and the police department. And around that is going to be And around that is going to be a living wall, green wall, that's covered with Virginia Creeper, which has a great variation of color and density. And so we'll have basically a green wall covering the parking garage. And then on top of the parking garage, we have a, it's sort of a mid-soil depth, green roof, and that allows for quite a variation of grasses and plant life. And then just inside of that, headed toward the center, is a little walk area and sort of a little celebratory area that's small, privately maintained by the city. It doesn't have a lot of access, but only access through the court entrances and then through the police department. So we can have secured access to that area. And then the addition overall, the addition overall is nestled between the two wings. The proportion is in keeping with the original building on, if you notice particularly, the glass section. That is the same proportion as the west wing off to the right in this image. And you can see the module of five windows at the top of the west wing. That's then repeated exactly in the module of five within the glass storefront that's being used or the aluminum curtain wall system that's being used at the chambers. And then the balance of the building is a copper facade, and that copper is based upon the proportions of the existing masonry work. To see, don't know if you can because of the lighting. This is an exteriors board, exterior materials, very limited palette. This is the concrete board that's offset from either side of the wings, and this is much in keeping with the color of the slate of the roof. This concrete board is a rain screen wall system, and what that means is that it's a ventilated wall system. And so we don't have closed joints. We don't have like gasketed or sealed joints. And that allows us to make a very clean articulated wall section. And then it also makes this, this is an integral color material, so the maintenance is long lived. We don't have to paint this. We don't have to care for it in that sense. Copper facade, obviously copper will age in Virginia to a brown color, similar to the brown of the downspouts that are currently out there. And then, but when it first goes up, it'll be of this nature and then it'll gradually change over the years to go to a lower tone. And then we're looking at this glass. It's hard to see here. I will probably leave all of these boards with you so that you can look at them later. This is a translucent glass so that we don't have a transparent glass, and that's for security reasons into the chambers. So when it's being used as a court, we need security for the judge. So.
Is that it? You're done?
For the rear facade or for the exterior?
I don't know, for whatever you're going to say. Keep on going if you.
Okay. I was going to rattle through them all if that's good with you.
That'd be great. Keep on trucking.
Okay. Keep trucking. So this is the floor plan, and with the floor plan, I'm going to put another board up. This is the primary entrance into the building. And with that primary entrance, that goes straight into basically the vestibule chambers. And then you can make a right and then obviously go into chambers. If you made a right beforehand, you go into the core corridor of the main area of City Hall here. And then so when you do that, we can just switch to the next image. This is what you would now have, is that basically we have several primary public meeting spaces. These also will double as attorney meeting spaces with clients, but it's also basically functions as the Dogwood Room functions now. And it's going to be on the main level just inside of the doorway. We also have a series of display cases that are integrated into the overall area, and those are for archaeological finds that we have in Falls Church. It's for any awards that the city has received. It's public communication space that is along that wall. In the very distance, you see a blue. That's part of our wayfinding strategies. So basically, we're opening up the whole center corridor of City Hall, and we have these two connectors at either end. We have an intense color wall at the end. Elevator is there on the left and the stairs on the right. If you turned around, you would see something almost identical to that on the back. And then obviously to the left of this image is a wood wall. That wood wall is a portal that now you enter through to go into chambers. Next. Hello, chambers. So these are our new chambers. And so what we have is we're taking the original pews that we have in chambers now. We're going to be refinishing them and we're going to be transplanting them over to here. Basically, the exact same configurations, the exact same proportion spacing in between, identical. We're going to be taking the blue or sort of the teal color of the ends, and we're going to be coloring that a little bit more of a light gray color. And then you can see that we're going to be replicating or sort of creating a new dais area that you would see. And so basically, if we go back two boards, Cindy, if you can go back two, right there. And then you can see we have how we've got that as an arched element that's going to be raised by 14 inches. And then in front of that, we have the same table configurations as you currently have in chambers. Behind you, there's going to be a small bathroom, a small kitchenette, and then a small storage area that we can have, you know, various items that are related to what you would be doing, you know, crackers and Cheetos, all those things that we need to sustain ourselves as we move through the night. Behind all of that is the sheriff's department. They support obviously all of the courts, and we also have our communications, key communications and equipment room that's back there. So elements of the materials, if we go to the rendering again.
Can you guys describe quickly the prisoner?
Oh, yeah. We can talk about prisoner transport. Basically, down below is a garage, and then within the garage, we have a Sallyport that then comes to an elevator. The current cursor is on the elevator. That brings secure, basically a prisoner will be brought up in that area, goes directly into this holding area, and then we have a holding cell where the cursor is now. And so, you know, each prisoner is transferred individually, come up, secure zone, locked all the way through. It's basically a Sallyport that's vertical. Okay. We have, yeah, so we have the 14-inch, that's basically the two riser height that the dais is. And then so what we're going to have is we have a small handicap ramp that's going to be on the far left. So actually, if we go to the rendering now, that will be helpful. So you can see about the middle of the page down, you see those diagonal lines. That's the ramp that's going to lead up to the upper area. And then so going back just to show you a few of the materials that we're thinking, can you battle that with me? Our glass is secured onto this board. We haven't gotten this off. Thank you. So again, it's the translucent glass that we're going to see from the inside that allows a lot of light in, which was key for us to try to make the courtroom to feel a lot lighter. Obviously, it's used at night primarily for a lot of your meetings, but fortunately, this begins to reflect a lot of light in the interior also, so we'll have a greater visual depth and it won't feel like such a black box in that space. For the days, if we needed to actually have longer days, and we have blackout screens that are basically, or these aren't blackout screens, these are screens, and we're looking at what porosity of the screen that we should use right now. That can actually, they come out of behind the ceilings and we close off to close off all the windows so that you could do projection within this room. Our ceilings are made of this acoustical board, suspended acoustical board, to give us the acoustical sound deadening that we need. And then also behind the chambers area itself, or the back wall of the chambers, is acoustical panels that are going to be wrapped in this fabric so that we can also get the sound deadening that we need. We have a lot of hard surfaces in there, much like, you know, we have now. Currently, all of your walls are wrapped with sound deadening material. In this one, we were just planning on doing the back wall and the ceilings and the floors with the carpeting. The carpeting is going to be this gray, but it'll be gray that actually has this color blue that's going to be mixed in various stripes. And so it gives a pretty good visual intensity to it. We can get some samples of that if you wanted to. And then we were looking at all of the other elements, basically reusing mahogany for the detailing, for the new balustrade that's going in front of the audience area, and then also for the capboards that are going to be used there at the desk area. Because what we're also going to have is that's going to be slightly raised so that you'll have more privacy at your written material than you do now. Currently, you have the desk that comes across and then turns down. We're going to be raising that slightly so that you can have a visual barrier with the work surface in your writing area. Let's see, I think we have covered most all of that. So, you know, the clear glass is basically in keeping with the original modules of the west wing. So it has a five bay, and so we've repeated that so that we have the clear windows so that you can actually experience some of the exterior. Audiovisual that we could talk about is that we have these two screens at the back of the wall.
What are you, driving the mouse? May I borrow that? This is outstanding. Okay.
And so with, then we have these AV screens that are going to be recessed into the acoustical panels. We obviously then have the city sill. We have AV, this is security cameras, as well as some television cameras that are going to be tucked in, trying to integrate all of those as well as speakers and infrared for ADA requirements for the hearing impaired.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So those AV screens are behind council?
Yes.
Are we having to turn around?
And then these three renderings at the top are looking from the dais. And then so they're kind of hard to see. Why don't we do this? Voila. Yep. And so we have three different options for looking from the front and looking at the back. So this is one large video screen that's going to be in the very back so that you guys could all see. And obviously here, there's microphones and seating from your perspective. One of the questions that we wanted to talk about today was the treatment of the existing wall. And so this is the wall that's going to be in common with City Hall now. That's the original wall. One option that we have been looking at is you drywall it because there's a range of different reasons why. One is to enclose a column. Another is an expansion joint. There's just a whole range of different things. But the option also exists. Try not to make anyone dizzy here. That we could also leave all the existing brick. And then if we left the brick, then you could have exposed, there's a structural steel column. That's one of the things that we're concealing. But then you can have the exposed brick. There's a drip course line you can see there. And then we could also treat that as our gallery wall, and it has a very nice visual texture, particularly if it's just painted a nice calm color. Another option is to, and you can see here, use the existing brick. And then where the window is, we would put in new brick to infill the old window. And that can be treated in a couple of different ways. You can see the slight variation in color there. And one of the reasons we're thinking about doing that, we could actually leave the existing window, but we're going to be cutting the existing window top off by about a foot and a half because of its alignment. And then the steel columns aren't in perfect alignment with where the current windows are either. And so there's some, just some gymnastics that one would do. That's one of the reasons that it led us, the color variation here and the pattern variation led us to sort of this option as a really nice way of integrating some of the historic qualities and surface textures of the building into the quality of the council.
For my taste, the unpainted brick is just so 1969 Capitol Hill townhouse, so I don't like that at all.
Tell me how you really feel, Daniel.
I had two questions before we move off chambers.
Yes.
Where do people make public comment?
You know, we left that out of the rendering accidentally. So we basically are going to have an area that's right here.
I thought we were eliminating public comments.
Okay.
Wasn't that the request of council to?
I wasn't going to make that public. It's, no, that's a complete oversight on the architect's part. It's supposed to be right there in the corner, and we just haven't gotten that rendered. And so we're adding that into the floor plans and.
Is there room to, can I keep it front and center?
I'm sorry?
Is there room in the space to keep it front and center and not tucked in a corner?
Yeah, I think we were thinking more to the center, but we were on the phone trying to describe it to.
Yes. I have the controls here. I can go back.
Of course. Yeah.
So what we're trying to do is we can get it in this area possibly, in this area.
And then while we're talking about size of it, what is seating in the old chambers versus the new chambers?
Exactly the same.
Are we reusing the seats to save money?
It does save money. It saves a lot of money. We were thinking of it more as sort of just to keep the spirit of that space in some ways. We're going to be, you know, re-adding new upholstery and cushions and refurbishing the old wood and then painting it with a color that actually is more in keeping with the overall balance of the building.
I just, there's no flexibility in this space at all.
Not currently, no.
Did you have more to your presentation or are you finished?
I think we're, I think we've covered all the territory that we needed to tonight.
Okay. Why don't we move on? Do other folks have questions? Anyone have any comments? Ms. Hardy?
I had other questions outside chambers. So I think looking at the front elevation, which one did you say was the main entrance again, the left or right one?
The left-hand side is going to be the main entrance.
Okay. I know last time we had seen this, there was, it was like a blue doorway, not that I'm advocating for a blue doorway, but one I think common citizen concerns we have is that they don't know which way to enter City Hall. And I know that this solves some of it because at least you're looking at both of them, but if there's some way to at least call out which one the main entrance would be, maybe just not clear in this.
Both of them. Both of them are main entrance. The one on the left is the one with the ramp for ADA accessibility and would be the prime path in for evening meetings or court.
That's a good point. Can we emphasize it?
Yep.
Probably at night for council meetings, would we have both doors open or just one door?
It'd be like lighting that you do at night. You only light up one door.
We haven't really gotten to the signage and that next phase of your thoughts.
It's a great point. It's a great point.
And then looking at the back garage, you mentioned kind of a green roof on the half of the garage. Does that prevent it from using the, I guess, the roof of the garage as kind of a terrace? Because I think one of the ideas we talked about a while ago was being able to eventually, you know, extend the farmer's market, for example, to the top of it. So if it's greened over, does that limit the use of what can go on the top?
Yes, it does. And so it's a question of how we would want to use it because we can actually make it a green roof or we can make it more usable, but we would have to pave it basically to do that, and so pave the whole thing. So when it wouldn't be in use for the farmer's market, it would be just a paved roof. When you begin to do that, you also modify the entire approach to stormwater management because if we have a green roof, we can use that stormwater management for water treatment and in holding. And so it's a give and take. We can have one which gets us actually more lead points, or we can go with the concrete approach that would give us longer-term farmer's market use.
And is the construction cost of either about the same?
The concrete option.
Okay. So in this version, you wouldn't be able to use it as a functional, extra functional space?
Outside of this space that shows here in gray where the cursor is, which I think is about a 49 or 50-person occupancy to meet our.
It's a 49-person occupancy terrace. That's right up here.
Okay. Moving to layout of the spaces, I know that there were some concerns about storage spaces by the Commissioner of Revenue, and then in general, I had a question about where the customer-facing departments are, whether that's been resolved or whether we started working out floor plans.
Do you want to speak to the meeting with the Commissioner of Revenue and then I can do the floor plan a little bit with Todd?
Yeah, we met with Tom and his deputy Denise yesterday and walked through their storage needs, and I think it was a good meeting. It basically left with, he was going to do some measurements in terms of, so he can give us a figure as to what his storage needs are for the things he needs to access every day, and then we'll take that information and go with it. We think that there's space there, but we're going to wait to hear what he gives us, you know, with that information, and we'll go from there.
And so we do have storage space in here suite and then the shared one down on the lower level. So let me give an overview of the layout. This presentation doesn't have all the floor plans with all the offices, but I, this is third floor on east and west wing, and then I'll replicate for the first. So this is what we currently refer to as two. You're coming in, and then we have the split level, half floor up. So here's your stairs and elevator right off that central axle, and we are coming in here to the Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer's suite. So right here, you have Treasurer and their counter, lobby gathering area, Commissioner of Revenue, then staff here, and then offices, and then over here is their business auditor and a storage room. On all floors, we have a shared copy room, bathroom, IT kind of closet, core infrastructure for that suite, secure doors off of that lobby area. So that's third floor west wing. Below them.
Is that HR?
Yes. And that's HR. Thank you, Mary Beth. So for HR, we have an enclosed suite and not a lobby area to allow for confidentiality, and each of the three staff would meet with employees and vendors in their workspace. On the first floor west wing, which would be below this floor, you'll have the clerk of the court, housing and human services, and court services. And so that brings the clerk of the court real immediate. And so, that brings the clerk of the court real immediate to court when people are coming in and out for fines or determinations from court, but also easy for public access for paying fines and parking tickets. So, on the west wing, we have a lot of that foot traffic. That is human services and not land use development permit. On the east wing, this is showing the third floor east wing. And so, this is the administrative wing. You have finance, what we call the Oak Conference Room now. So, this could be the Oak, same size. Then, we have city clerk, city attorney, city manager, office of communications, all in this area. Once again, with a shared bathroom, copy work area. On the main level, Todd was speaking to the New Dogwood. That's our meeting room here outside of chambers, which is divisible. So, you actually have two meeting rooms and then could house a joint council, school board or joint council, planning commission work session with audience. This office space here is the voter registrar. One floor down on where we are now, where we're actually sitting now would be Economic Development Office. Then, you'd have storage, mailroom, the... Another meeting room, which we are referring to as the new Laurel. And then, public bathrooms, vending machines and another little storage room. And then, I think the only space I haven't commented on, but Todd had mentioned, but behind chambers is the sheriff's office space. And the... This room that the cursor is on is the AV FCC TV equipment room for when folks are filming both planning commission and council meetings or any of our public meetings. That's a quick overview of the space layout.
Other questions? Vice Mayor Connolly?
If we do indeed end up putting a green roof on the parking garage, can there be an educational component to that so that people who are up there can learn about green roofs?
We'd love that.
Okay. I would love to include that. The translucent glass at nighttime, will that be see-through from the outside? Will people be able to watch what's going on in the chamber at night?
There'll be silhouettes. You will not be able to see individual. You'll not be able to make out individuals.
And if those blinds go in, would that darken it completely? Okay.
This rendering sort of gives you the sense of the silhouette. And the windows start 30 inches from the floor, I think we saw on the site plan. So, it's also not all the way down to the floor, table height.
And a large part of this renovation is about the public safety. Does this... Is Chief Gavin content that this is meeting all the public safety needs that are required?
Yes, we've reviewed it both with Chief Gavin and Matt Kay from the sheriff's office as our prime POC there. And we've reviewed the court pieces with them. And Studio 27 has also reviewed it against the Virginia Supreme Court guidelines. So, both police and court functions.
Okay. And then, as far as parking goes, what's the net loss or gain of spots around City Hall and in the whole area because of this?
For the whole campus area, we have 201 spots. And the end of the day, we'll have 200. But, we have much more efficient use for the public safety and secured functions in the garage.
So, with that whole garage, we're just losing one spot?
Yep. Basically, net zero. We know that we can do some restriping or a future project to actually hopefully improve it for the whole campus.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and the side entrances. So, are those... Those side entrances that exist now that are so confusing, they're going to go away?
Yes, basically, the west wing we're taking out completely. And then, on the east wing, we're going to be taking out the upper level as well as all the stairs and ramping to go to the upper level. But, we are going to be leaving the police department. And that's primarily for emergency egress purposes.
One other thing that I would love council thoughts as you were thinking about those nuances. On the front of the building, we have a place to put the names, speaking of wayfinding, for this building, which is Harry Wells. The sign at the street, the white sign says Harry Wells City Hall. Todd has modeled municipal building as a message of what more happens here. But, that's certainly something that we would welcome some input on as we go finalizing.
Mr. C.
Thank you, Mayor. I really like this final layout. I mean, it's, you know, it's modest, but I think it works, it's straightforward. I really like the green wall. I think... Only... I think it's... We should have more of them, but it's a good way of screening parking garages. And so, I'm glad we're doing that as well as sticking with having a green roof. Although, I... There's always a sentiment that, you know, any flat surface ought to be utilized. But, here, in fact, the green roof is being utilized for stormwater management and contributes, as you said, to the lead points. And I think in time with the plannings, it'll be a marvelous, attractive addition to what we have. I think in many ways, it will look much more attractive than just a sea of paving. So, the fact that you're able to accommodate about 50 people on that... On the paving that is there is a good thing. So, is this a solid silver LEED certified building? Or how do you could just characterize where you are with the certification?
Yeah, last time we did, as we finished the design up, we're going to be submitting the design package, which is the first package for LEED. And then, so right now, I feel like we're fairly solid silver. I need to do a couple of calculations to confirm it. But, last time I did my calculations and did the worksheet, we were solid silver.
And are there... I heard there were going to be three electric car charging stations?
Charging stations? We're planning those in, yes, sir.
Okay. And are they at a prominent location?
Because we put those at the front west corner?
Yeah, front west corner following the planning commission meeting. And then, we're also planning for some on the rear by the garage for... More likely for city vehicles, but the front would be for public.
Oh, great.
And then, we also have a whole range of protected and unprotected bike parking. And then, so we have sheltered bike parking.
You've anticipated my next question. Okay. So, it's... And these are... How do I say this? It favors the use of bikes so that you're not walking 50 feet in the dark somewhere to find your bicycle, right?
Yes, basically where the steps are coming out on the east wing and the ramp is coming out on the east wing for our corner, that's where all of our new covered bike parking is going to be. So, it's like one of the most prominent locations and we'll share with the community center.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Just one more question. The portraiture in City Hall, this is our big opportunity to upgrade the portraits and change and add to the portraiture that we have.
We can get a picture of me if that's what you're...
Yeah, so we definitely want to have David Tarter there.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, right?
Thank you. So, I hope that we can engage in a process.
Yeah, we're actually talking with James now on basically, you know, we do an equipment survey, we do a furniture survey, we do an art survey, basically. And then, so as you begin to get all these pieces together, now's an opportune time to, you know, reconsider the way that things are being presented. And so, I think it's ideal and a perfect opportunity. And so, you have some wonderful portraits and there's some other ones that would be wonderful as well.
Did... Sorry.
Go for it.
Did you guys talk further about the eight versus seven seats on the dais and how to center on the main man?
I'm not sure that James had a chance to talk to Todd, but... So, let me just put out the comments we had earlier. Let me see if I can get back to go the right way. So, this currently is showing eight, which is the maximum count when we looked at other boards and commissions. But, one of the reactions we had was making sure we had a center seat, not cross angled so that the mayor or the judge was centered and then the others go there. So, did I capture the comments from the afternoon? So, that was just some thought on design. Because right now, it's a bit of a, maybe a point there and so we need to...
Yeah, it's a point right now and it's all balanced. So, we can make it balanced around a center.
And what else we got? Ms. Hardy or Ms... Yes, Ms. Hardy?
Do you all have early thoughts on the, I guess, transition plan? So, what do we do with City Hall while it's under construction?
We do. We have been working hard on that. For some of our police functions, in order to keep them close to their vehicles, we're looking to put the officers out at the property yard because we have an older building that can be brought up to speed. That's an office and has their car there and secure. So, we're taking care of that and then moving the police around, mostly renovating in place. For courts, we are looking at the Masonic Lodge. They have offered us that building. And from the sheriff's perspective, it's good because it's independent and secure and it's awful little fall. So, it's easy to tell citizens how to get there for the four to five months. We're meeting with one judge this Wednesday and the next judge the following Wednesday to get their review. And then, for about 80 staff that we need to move out, the plan is for the center work to be done first and then the wings. So, the staff can stay east and west wing till spring. And we do have some staff in the middle that we need to relocate, but we'll use existing space in City Hall and Gage House, the house in the rear. And then, for the 79 folks that we need to move off for six to eight months, we're working with office building space in the city to see if we can get a lease agreement and the space layout to fit everybody. And that, we're actively working on that. I hope within two weeks, we'll have that nailed down. And then, concurrently with all that, we're working on the IT and the support that we need to follow staff so that we can still function and serve citizens.
What about council?
And council. So, boards and commissions, we are looking at a couple of things. One, for council meetings, we're exploring the community center because it's nearby for citizens and we can stand it up for all the FCC TV stuff. We're also talking to the school personnel, the superintendent about the Flower Building, their conference room works for planning commission and other boards and commissions. And when the school board can't meet here, to meet there. Also, already hooked up for FCC TV. And the third option we're working with for boards and commissions, council, school board and planning commission in particular, is maybe Mary Ellen Henderson. They've talked about us using the cafeteria, upgrading some of the FCC TV equipment with PEG capital money. And being able to use that since it can accommodate a large piece and already has a lot of the... So, we're working on that, also with the community center for some of our smaller boards and commissions.
Okay, other questions, comments?
What's the timeframe now, you said?
The first phase, the center, new construction in the rear and basically HHS and sheriff's office would be December. And so, we need, and the meeting rooms would be December through March, April. And then, April would start phase two where we pull all the east and west services out. And so, we're trying to find one office building for that because then you kind of have the new City Hall to go to for a period of time in one place. And then, that would be April, May to December.
So, I've got a couple of questions for you if I could. First off, I appreciate the thought you put into all this. It's clear you spent a lot of time considering how things will work together and the materials and the like. So, I certainly appreciate that. With respect to the garage, is that like precast concrete essentially?
It's actually a concrete block. And I'm actually sorry, we don't have a sample of that. It's a concrete block, but it's not equated to the gray CMU. We're actually doing... It's a block that has a speckled face, that's a polished surface. It's, I should say, burnished surface. And then, so it's a finished material. It's much nicer than concrete block. And then, what we're doing is we're also raking the horizontal joints, which means that we give a deep divot into it. And then, making the verticals flush. And then, so that level of detail to give you a striated surface, that's all a horizontal shadow line. And then, so we have these long bands of eight inches. And so, it gives you a different visual reading than just a concrete block. I think it'll be much nicer. We can get you a sample of that.
I'd love to see a sample. I have to say, I've got some serious concerns.
Why wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, actually frankly, I have concerns about the garage as a whole as the expense to pay. I just... I'm not sure we need a 50-car secure garage. I mean, I just... That's my feeling. And there's an expense to taxpayers that concerns me that I'm just not sure it's wholly necessary. I am concerned about its visual appearance as well. I mean, that area is just a beautiful cherry hill. It spills into Cherry Hill, our library. It's really the center of civic life in the city. And I'm concerned about putting in, you know, any kind of concrete block frankly and taking up visual openness that there is right now. And so, I do have concerns about that. The red board in the middle, is that essentially like a Hardy board or something? It's a concrete...
I'm not...
I'm talking about the rear elevation.
Here?
Yeah, yes.
That's copper.
Well, that's copper. So, it's just a flat sheet of copper going from floor to ceiling basically?
Uh, no, it's shingles of copper.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What kind of shingles? I'm not aware of using copper shingles.
Uh, it's basically there are panels that are put together and it's eight inches by about four feet. And then, so you stagger them just like you would brick. And so, what we've done is we've taken the proportion of brick, turned it into a shingle panel of copper and then those all seam together. And it basically, that hooks into it like a... It's a vertical, a hooking system. I can bring you samples of it.
Okay. Okay, it doesn't read that well. It reads to me almost like a painted concrete board of one of the... When you look at the elevations.
I'm sorry that the images are not doing it justice. It is a beautiful wall system.
It sounds like concrete sounds... Or copper sounds much better than what I... I'd heard concrete board, which may be that gray piece on the right.
It's the gray piece here, yeah. That's a concrete board. It's very different than a Hardy board. I do want to make that clear. A Hardy board is a pressed concrete board and this is more of a cast concrete board. And so, they're very different products. The Hardy board basically is... It's almost like a paper form that's been injected with concrete. And so, it has to be painted, it has to be cared for. It's a much softer material. This board is... It's called CBF. It's a concrete board fabricators. And it's a rain screen wall system. So, it's a very different kind of construction, much longer life, a lot less maintenance. And it's just a very crisp construction method.
I've seen in buildings, it looks almost like ceramic tile or granite, if you will.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not... I must not be familiar with it because what I've seen, concrete board, I haven't been a huge fan of, to be honest.
And when he says rain screen, you should know that there will be gaps...
About three-eighths.
Eight of an inch, three-eighths of an inch, something like that between each panel. But, it reads from a distance as a whole.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, my concern is mostly centered around the rear of it and the garage. I think the copper looks much better than I was anticipating. Again, I think you've been very thoughtful and done a nice job really contemplating what the city would need. So, I applaud you for that and thank you for that. That's all I've got as far as questions or comments. Yes?
Can you just at some point bring back the rendering with the public comment space in there? Because I think that's a really critical element. I mean, I know it's not shown in what we've seen. There's not the whole presentation.
Yes, I'm sorry I wasn't following you exactly, but yes, the answer is we can do that.
And sorry, in the main room. And then, just again, Cindy, we really need to look at that AV. If we have one screen for council to look at and it goes out, there's any technical difficulties. It's one of the nice things about having two screens now. And I guess I would also just say that we should just make sure that that dais is really set up for the 21st century with outlets, multiple outlets, ability to put screens on there. And you can get away with needing the screen at the back if there was a way to put a screen.
And one of the things we were looking at is building in some screens that are like one for every two seat. That way, we'd do any board and commission without having to depend on making sure everybody had a tablet because a tablet would be the other alternative that we could do also. So, we're looking at some variations as we get into that next level of AV detail.
And then, just the last thing is that, I mean, the pews, they're very historic. They kind of continue what we have, but we really lose a lot of flexibility. And when we went to Vienna, one of the things, was it Vienna? One of the...
Eyes.
Solar eyes. The flexible seating space they had in that area, I just thought it added a lot. You know, you could adjust it. You know, if you weren't expecting a big turnout, you could bring all the seats up front. You know, you could curl them around. You could make it... You could set it up for two speaking stations versus one. There was just a lot more flexibility. And I think this is just a good opportunity to make this space multipurpose.
Okay, are there any other comments? If not, thank you all for the good work you've done. We really appreciate what you've put into this.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just have one more.
Yes, sir.
Since you started talking about screens here, are these 4K OLED screens or are they DLPs? What are you looking at?
I'm sorry, what screens are we talking about in the...
The projection screens.
Projector screens. I can't... I don't know that answer yet. We're working with the AV consultants with the city right now to establish what exactly that's going to be.
All right.
We're trying to not have washed-out screens that you currently live with, but big enough that everybody can see.
Right. Well, you know, Karen brought up the issue about having equipment go out. So, if you're doing digital light projection, which is, you know, current big screen cheap stuff, it's going to be obsolete by the time you have these things installed, so...
Yeah, some AV that I'm looking at now for a variety of other projects. We're doing, you know, the latest, the most... you know, the latest, the most cutting-edge screens that we can possibly get, LED.
All right, so I want that OLED 4K screen in.
Okay, 4K screen. And so, it would be also good to figure out or to find out a little bit more about your AV desires for that longer distance screen and then the immediate screen at, at the dais. Because if you guys could use iPads and project the iPads so that you had all the information right there and had the ability to scroll while the screen is going, you know, would that not be more optimal? And I don't know that answer. I mean, just as you go through the next few months, if you think about that and think about what kind of flexibility you may want there, that would be truly helpful for us to know.
Okay, well, listen, thanks again. I'm sure we'll be talking more to you. We appreciate all of your time, including yours, Cindy, as well. Why don't we move on to the next item? I guess the last item for tonight. Wyatt?
We do have the next item. Before we get to that, can I just note for Department of Public Works, is they've spent a lot of time working on this project, but that's not the only thing they've worked on. We've, we've got groundbreaking about to start on the utility undergrounding for South Washington Street. Long awaited, and that's very exciting. The traffic calming on Maple Avenue, that's going in. I think that's just about to start or starting this week. The Ped Crossings on Lincoln and Northwest, that's going to be going in in the next couple of weeks. We still had a few design issues. We're working out on that, but that will go in before the cold weather season. The, the pre-construction conference on the Van Buren Bridge occurred just last week. And so, that's going to be getting underway. My point is, there's, I think, a lot of good stuff going on out in the communities. The site plan for the downtown park is going to the planning commission. And we'll go through the bidding process for that very shortly. The goal is to have that under construction this winter with the ribbon cutting in the, in the summer so people can use it the summer. So, there's a lot of, a lot of good things going on out in the community while, while DPW is managing this project as well.
Great, thank you. Congratulations. Maybe that's a little premature, but thank you for your good work and we appreciate the update so much. Good stuff going on. So, keep us informed. All right, so now we're on to the next, last formal item on the agenda, vehicle license tax.
So, I'm going to turn this over to our treasurer and commissioner of revenue. And one thing, just to plug the good work they're doing, I think the commissioner of revenue and their work on personal property has identified 200 additional cars that will be on the tax rolls this year. And so, that you're in your first quarter financial report, we'll be able to have those numbers for you. But it's a lot of good work going on in these offices as well.
(inaudible).
Yeah, that's right. All right, thank you. Mr. Clinton, are you leading off?
Uh, sure. I'm Tom Clinton, Commissioner of Revenue. And we thought we would bring this item before you. It's been not a new problem, but a kind of a longstanding problem, what to do about people with out-of-state plates that appear to be residents. And we know there are exceptions, military, students, State Department people. You know, like anything we do, we do it with consideration, individual, you know, time and attention. But we feel that there is certain, you know, in talking with our neighbors, it's like 1% to 2% of their cars are out-of-state plates. And several of our neighboring jurisdictions have adopted ordinances that are addressing that, that basically you want to disincentivize people to not get Virginia plates on their cars, which are more traceable by, you know, us, the police and landlords and lots of different, you know, situations. So, we're talking to those people. I talked to the Arlington Commissioner of Revenue. I talked to the former Fairfax County Department of Taxation. He sent me an email with some details. And then Fairfax County, a person I knew over there, sent us some actual numbers on what they found. So, it's good to work with your neighbors. It's good to get a sense of what we can do on our small staff. Jody and I have been talking about what we can do with parking enforcement, tag readers, various types of things that we can do to, you know, tighten up the assessment and the collecting. And Gary's kind of taken the lead in investigating the actual language of the text. And Carol has been helpful, our city attorney, in looking it over. So, we're really, you know, starting the ball rolling, looking into this. And we think it has, more than anything else, yes, there'll be revenue, but it's an equity thing. And that's so important for those people that do pay their share of taxes, that everyone else pay their fair share, or that we qualify them as truly exempt. So, that's kind of where we're at there in a nutshell at this late hour.
Thank you, council. First, let me begin with saying, this has nothing to do with city decals. So, get that, take the window part out of your mind, okay? Okay? State code basically says that any locality may adopt an ordinance imposing a license tax not to exceed $100 annually upon owners of motor vehicles who do not display current license plates and are not exempted from the requirements of displaying such license plates under provision of the article. Okay? The state code also says that a resident owner of any passenger car, pickup, panel truck, moped, motorcycle, other than those provided for in the section that has the exemptions in it, that has been duly registered for the current calendar year in another state or country, at the times operated in the Commonwealth, a bunch of other stuff about pickup trucks, et cetera, shall within the first 30 days of his residency in the Commonwealth, register their passenger car, pickup truck, et cetera, and pay fees to the Commonwealth. So, basically, the state code requires people who move into Virginia to, you have changed their cars to Virginia plates within 30 days or be fined $100 annually. So, in other words, if they say, "I don't want to have Virginia plates," then they pay the fee of $100 every year. One of our difficulties is with the transient nature of people here, basically last, for example, last month, out of the DMV tapes, there were 660 vehicles that we registered or moved out of the city that hadn't notified us that they either moved in or moved out. And those are, those are from the DMV, Virginia DMV tapes. So, that means those people registered their cars in the state of Virginia. Okay? We estimate there are some, just as an estimate, some 240 vehicles in the city that are not registered that have out-of-state plates. The intent of this, of the ordinance is to get people to register their cars or register with us and so that we can at least get $100, which is, like Tom said, an equity issue. Because, you know, when you look next door and the person next to you is not paying any property tax on their vehicle and you are, you know, so, so much. We find several cars. We get tips from our tax evaders hotline. Some people even send us pictures of these three vehicles with Delaware tags on them.
Is it bounty?
They're, two of them are BMWs, by the way. So, they're high-tax vehicles. And of course, Delaware, there's no personal property tax. So, anyway, they're, and they own a home here in the city. So, anyway, that's the requirements. Persons who are here on military duty, full-time students with cars registered in another state in their parents' name, and State Department people that are here on, basically here for class of, you know, six weeks to learn Iranian or whatever, Farsi, are exempt. And we generally just give them a temporary for the period of time, a temporary decal, so they don't get tickets. Parking enforcement does help us a great deal, but we have one part-time parking enforcement guy. We have difficulties with access to a few buildings with underground parking. The ones that we do, once you're underground, the police computer system is inadequately, the signals are inadequate for it to continue. So, he can't tell how long a person's been there, who they are, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
So, that's basically our, our goal is to provide for this ordinance on the, for the city.
Great, thank you. Questions, Ms. Hardy?
I just had a quick one. It looks like most of our neighbors also do this and also charge $100. I was reading, it looks like Alexandria's, they're charging $350? How is that possible? If Virginia only allows 100?
There is, the, there's two sections to this. There is a, this $100, which is if you don't change your plates. Then there's a section that they have the option to charge an additional $250 if you don't register within the state in 30 days. Okay? Some of the jurisdictions have opted for that. Fairfax County has and Alexandria has. We found it a little bit troublesome to try to go to $200, $350 total. You know, the encouragement is to try to get them to register their cars in the state and put state plates on them. We do have a few, I don't want to call them moles, in some of the mixed-use buildings who send us information on our tax evaders website. One of the difficulties we have is that accessing out-of-state plates. We have access to the Virginia DMV, but not to other DMVs around the country. So, finding vehicles and what we call statuteuring them is difficult for us to assess because we need a VIN number to be able to assess them properly. And that's by, that's also by code.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
Okay, so, bear with me here now. I've got legal Tennessee plates and they're good until next year. I'm coming up here to Falls Church. I'm going to live in my uncle's basement. I'm looking for work. I don't know where I'm going to live. I don't know where I'm going to work. I'm here 30 days, 45 days. I'm here a couple of months and I'm still looking for work. Still living in my uncle's basement, still parking on the streets of Falls Church. What do I do that's different? What should I be doing now? You're telling me I should, at 30 days, register my car in the state of Virginia even though I may end up in Maryland? And then, in addition to that, pay 100 bucks or go through the whole Virginia licensing and so forth regime? Is that what you're telling me?
Correct. State code requires if you're going to be here more than 30 days, that you are required to either tag your car with Virginia plates or pay $100. The experience that Arlington County has found is that they've basically, the majority of people end up changing their plates. And, you know, they've realized almost a quarter million dollars a year in additional revenues. Those that, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, but if you're living in your uncle's basement, you know, $100 may be a bit for you, but you're still driving on our roads. We're plowing the snow for you and doing other...
That's our, that's our story and we're sticking with it. Okay, another example. My, I'm from New Jersey. I got legal tags in Jersey. My daughter just had a baby. I'm coming down to stay with my new granddaughter for a fixed time, 90 days. I'm out of here after 90 days. She's going back to work, kid's going to daycare. What do I do with my Jersey tags while I'm here for those 90 days with my granddaughter?
If you're here for a specific period of time, we'd be happy to work with you to give you a temporary decal, which would keep you from getting a, a ticket for parking on the street or having a vehicle here without a city decal.
A city decal?
That's a city decal.
But we weren't, I thought we weren't supposed to talk about decals. I mean, what do I do with my, again, you're going to tell me that my Virginia, I should re-register my vehicle?
No, you're not heartless.
If you're not a resident, you're here for short-term. There are exceptions. Come talk to us. We'll figure out a solution.
So, I think...
I mean, she's voting, filing her taxes in New Jersey. There's no reason to switch everything over for what is a short-term situation.
All right. The reason I'm bringing these two things up, these are just in my own personal experience, two actual cases. And you multiply that by 14,000 people, there're going to be at least 6,000 people coming in and saying that I, I need an exception. I mean, we've sort of, I know the way you guys work, you know. We work with people, but we also know some people and it's all been kind of fuzzy. And now, we're going to make it pretty hardcore. It's like 100 bucks. And it's going to make people aware that they are like on the wrong side of the law and it's going to cause a big uproar, I guarantee you, and a lot of extra work for you all.
Well, the key, I think, is residency, like Tom said.
So, my question is, goes to the public education part of it. You know, who's exempt? Military's exempt. You said somebody like at FSI who's here learning Farsi for, okay, they're not military, they're state.
Right.
Okay, well, that's another category. What about national intelligence? What about, I don't know, other categories of special service people?
What about a snowbird that owns two residences in different states and...
Another good question. I'm just saying that this is vaguely reminiscent to me of, and I think you all are doing the right thing, of course, but it's vaguely reminiscent to me of whatever it was that we voted on a couple of years ago about people had trailers and so forth parked in the streets. And we voted on it on first reading and never saw it back again. And I still to this day don't know what happened. But I think that we stirred some sort of hornet's nest and decided we didn't want to pursue it. I could be wrong on that. And I think we do want to pursue this. And yet, I do think it's going to make for a whopping big bunch of extra work for you answering a million versions of those kind of questions.
Well, it's, it's 1% to 2% of cars is what, you know, are...
Maybe not a million, maybe several dozen. But here in Smallville, you know, several dozen takes up your day of work.
But we have that anyway, to a certain degree. You know, we have hospice, people staying with people, kind of. And there is so many situations that we're already familiar with. If people talk to us, we'll look at the code, analyze situation. We just went through a huge Winter Hill parking situation where all kinds of situations came up. And Jody can speak to that better than I can. But we, we had to work together to figure out what situations were going on there. What did we anticipate? What did we not anticipate? What, how are we going to handle it going forward? So, and I, we're talking. We're talking to our friends that have had this longer. We've had people that had it on the books, but have never enforced it. So, you know, we, we hope that people come in and they, but there's uncertainty in life. There's, you know, DMV rules 30 days, but does everybody do that on top of moving and starting new jobs? No, we know that doesn't happen. But can it go on years on end? That's what we want to stop.
Yeah, I get that. I think, I mean, and I won't go on further, but I just think if we're going to do this, we need to have some kind of ramp-up period that, that publicly informs everybody, but all these exceptions, hospice is another one you just put up. That's another in my personal experience. I mean...
How about a warning? Can you guys give warnings for the first six months?
Nah, warnings not good enough. We got to have a public education campaign that tells people this is coming. Because I'm telling you, you are going to...
I forget about the referendum. Let's focus on the...
You're going to get, you think that lady, you think that lady wasn't happy about, you know, her kid's school bus. You're going to have people calling you all hours of the night and day. And a snowbird's another good example. And I'm just saying, do it the right way, do it the, you know, informed way and you'll, you know, we'll come out looking good. You know, it's obviously your argument that everybody needs to pay their fair share. It's a good argument, you know. But don't just have us, you know, two weeks from now, pass this on first reading, four weeks, pass it on second reading and boom. I don't think that's going to be enough.
All right, are there any other questions?
If I can respond to the snowbird situation. If you own two residences and one of them's in Florida and one of them's here, I don't see where the, personally, the $100 is going to be that big a deal.
Just one more thing.
All right, quick.
If you're going to bring this, bring this up, I would urge you to do what Councilmember Duncan is suggesting and then do the campaign. And it should last approximately 60 days at least. So, don't bring it before us until the middle of November. Are you reading my lips? Thank you.
That has been discussed.
All right, anything else? Okay, are there any councils? Thank you all very much for coming out and... Okay, are there any, Council, thank you all very much for coming out, and hopefully none of those cars were ours up here. How about Council schedule requests? Are there any, Council? Ms. Hardy?
What are we doing about the governor visit?
Take that.
Well, what is planned is that 2:45, we'll have a very short meeting with the governor to brief him on the campus development opportunity. And the governor and the Virginia Economic Development Partnership are aware of this from briefings in the past, but this will be the first time he'd be able to see it sort of on the ground. And it's part of a long and continuing effort just to consult with all the people that we should be consulting with on this project. The plan, though, is it's going to be a short window of time. We have about 15 minutes of time right after the I-66 meeting, and so we're going through the choreography of exactly how we'll handle that, and we can talk offline about how we'll do that.
I think we all got the, like, we got an email invite for that. So are we all supposed to be going to that? And then, there was, I don't know whether we were coordinating, whether Council was all, we're all going to show up or not, or...
I think Celeste has considered it a public meeting.
Yeah, I think we talked about it as a special gathering, and then the mayor will do the welcome. It's a public event, as posted by MBTC as well.
That's at 2 o'clock? Wasn't RSVP thing? There's an RSVP button on it.
2 to 2:45, and then we hope we're planning on meeting with the governor privately for 15 minutes, or as much as we can get from him, to discuss our campus site, the 10-acre site, further that conversation along.
Well, I don't plan to attend, not because I don't want to meet with the governor, per se, but I think that, you know, having all of us attend as council members, it's a bit much for 15 minutes. You'd still be saying hello when you need to say goodbye. And it needs to be substantive, and that's better done with a small group, just my point of view. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Budget and finance meets on Friday.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
We also had an invitation from the Town of Vienna to their Community Center grand opening on Saturday. Is anybody planning on attending that?
I may go to that.
Okay, I may go to that, too.
One other scheduling thing. October 2nd work session is canceled to allow members to go to the VML conference. And then the October 16th work session is planned to be a walking tour of the 301 West Broad, the Lincoln Project, and then the walking tour will culminate at Washington Broad to meet with Insight Development Team to have a on-the-site tour of the property with cones laying out where setbacks would be, and illustrations of height and massing and that type of things right there on the street. So that's the plan for the October 16th work session.
So your schedule thing here, which says...
Is outdated.
Yeah, that's, that's been...
Overtaken by events.
Overtaken by events. That, that action listed there would, if it were to occur, would likely not occur until November sometime.
All, all the work session items, we're going to try to use your meeting on the 23rd to give you briefings on those items.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Move adjourn.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you, Council.